All right, everybody ready? I call this regular meeting of the Village of Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'll start with roll call. Calvert, Hassler, Hofstra, Jackson, Lemieux, Ludke, Romano, Shalinski. I, to a present. With that, we have quorum. Before we get started, I just want to mention really quickly, you guys may or may not know, but Community Development Director Mark McLaughlin is no longer with us. And filling in for him in the interim is Deputy Director Michelle House. So, thank you for that, Michelle, and we'll move on from there. So, first item here is roll call. Well, I just did that. Okay, approval of minutes, Minutes of June 12th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So, our first item of business this evening is PZ 2509 for 10 South Charles Avenue, zoning map amendment. I would ask if you're going to speak on the item, just stand, we'll get you, raise your right hand, we'll get you sworn in real quick, everybody at once, it'll only take a minute. You can do it from your seat, that's fine.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, you'll have a second to speak, but yeah. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in these proceedings is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right, so we will start with the presentation from staff.
The application before us tonight is for a zoning map amendment for 10 South Charles. That property is requesting a rezoning from MXT to RS 7.5. I'll go over a summary of their request, allow for the petitioner to make any comments, allow the commission to ask any questions, hold a public hearing, and return for commission discussion and motion if appropriate. The lot is currently zoned mixed-use transitional or MXT and is currently a single dwelling home. The petitioners would like to change the zoning to a single dwelling RS 7.5 district. This would allow them to construct a detached garage that they're looking to install on the property. The applicant went through some modifications to the house in 2023 under the MXT zoning. With the rezoning to RS 7.5, all of those modifications that were made to the home would still be code compliant. I have included a site plan showing the existing home and then the location of the garage that they would be looking to install. That would be done under a separate building permit and is not up for discussion tonight. But the garage would not be able to be constructed in this location without the rezoning. I do have the standards for zoning map amendment review and approval for consideration by the commission. We will hold a public hearing, and then staff has prepared a sample motion if the commission feels the rezoning is appropriate. And with that, staff or the petitioner can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have any thing they want to say this evening before we move to questions or discussion up here?
No, I'm ready for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment or questions on the agenda item? All right, seeing none. Questions from the commission?
As I look at the Google Maps photo of this, it appears the garage is already there.
There is a garage there, it's an old garage.
Could you do me a favor, we're being recorded. No, you can speak, but just come up to the podium now and speak, and just state your name one time so it's on the record, thanks.
Estelen Swetan, I'm the petitioner and homeowner. So there is a garage there currently, it's an old garage that is deteriorated and not in good structural condition that we will be demolishing.
Okay.
A question was, it appears that there's two plats, there's the 016 and 014, is that correct? It looks like just the, there's an area that's called 102.
Are you looking at the survey, the lots?
No, I'm looking at the zoning. It almost looks like there's an 014 that goes all the way back to the back, it's where the grass is.
Yes, so that is part of our lot. So, I actually own the building next to it, I also own 100 and 101, and that's the north, I own the full lot of 100, 101, and 102. So the other half, the northern half of it, is what used to be the Italian restaurant, and that will be my next project. But the 102 is the rear of the yard.
Okay, so 016 extends all the way back to 103, is that correct?
Yeah, I think what you're seeing.
No, 103 is not part of our property.
Correct. Yeah, I think Commissioner Lemieux, what you're seeing is those dotted lines are actually like a previous subdivision. And those show up on some of the maps, am I correct on that, Michelle?
Yes, so the plat included as Exhibit A shows lots 100, 101, and 102. This is Lot 19, but you can see those dash lines are included.
Yep.
But we're only discussing the rezoning of Lot 19.
Yeah, so on some of the GIS maps, they show the original subdivisions as dotted lines, and that could sometimes be a little confusing, but I think that's what those are.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
And so do we know why it was zoned this way originally, because it used to be included with the properties that were on St. Charles, is that?
So, my belief is that, and I was not here when that rezoning was done.
Yeah, I understood.
However, my thought is that to have a more developable lot, they likely included the single-family home, because if you look at the size of this lot and this square, it'd be easier to have a more buildable space for future development with parking.
Okay. But it's been?
Obviously with the changes that have been made to the home, that is not going to happen, and those are under common ownership by the petitioner. So, it makes some sense to now change this to a single-family zoning, which is what the use of the property is.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I was here when we did the zoning ordinance update and the comprehensive map update, and there were certainly areas where the zoning that was, the zoning designations were aspirational, like how you would want to develop the area, or how areas would envision, like that, obviously that square parcel is like, Michelle said, is much more developable. It obviously creates a few potential non-conformities, but to be clear, this is not non-conforming.
Right.
It's actually conforming in every way currently in terms of use and setbacks and height and bulk and everything. But I believe that would have been the reason on this parcel.
Michelle?
Yes.
Can you walk us through why a garage isn't allowed on MXT? I was doing a little digging into that, and it seemed a little gray of an area, didn't quite, I could appreciate that sort of adjustment to, obviously to make, go to RS 7.5 if that's the case, but I just want to make sure I understand why that's, what's precluding us from doing just that?
I believe it was due to the setbacks of the zoning district also, maybe just a second. So the accessory structure has a maximum area in that zoning district of 100 square feet, and then the setbacks would require that it would need a zoning variation.
So in an MXT, an accessory structure can only be 100 square feet? Okay. Well, that would not make any sense.
Yeah, that seems like something that didn't get updated when we updated accessory structures generally.
Where would I, where would that be highlighted, but just out of curiosity, from a text standpoint within, is that within Article 4, within MX district?
I believe so, I don't have that up, give me just one second.
Because I'm seeing that a single-family home would be an allowed use in MXT, right, per our Table 6.1 of uses, right? That would say we can, we could have a residential use, and accessory uses, you know, accompanying a primary use would be acceptable, right? Or permitted. And I'm looking, and the reason I'm asking these questions is because I, on a certain level, I have a, I have a, this is in a TIF, right, this is in the new TIF that we've just created, and I don't know what are, the general alignment of wanting to have residential zone districts within the TIF, and how this sort of aligns with sort of comprehensive plan.
Yeah, in the comprehensive plan, the area is shown as mixed-use, and it's in what would be considered the St. Charles mixed-use corridor. It's not identified as any specific, you know, development site or anything, but that is how it's.
Actually, I think it was highlighted as an opportunity site within?
Oh, was it?
Within the TIF.
Oh, within the TIF.
TIF presentation that was done, highlighted as an item N within that document. So I just want to see what, you know, why we wouldn't be able to just say, let's have a couple of variations so we can get ourselves a garage on this lot and still leave it MXT.
That would be another way to do it. I'm not finding off the, right off the bat, so I apologize.
Yeah, because I'm looking at table, I'm in 4.4.3, under general building, which, within the permitted districts, that's a building type that's in MXT, and they talk about item 14 under C, uses, item 14, ground story and basement says all permitted uses except the ground floor residential should require a special use, residential accessory uses will be permitted on the ground floor by right if all residential is above. I mean, I don't know what that even really means, but, because there's really nothing, I don't think, I didn't see anything within MX districts that said that we can't have an accessory start. That's why I was trying to see, that when you said that 100 square feet, that seemed like, well, obviously then that becomes a.
Yeah, and I'm not finding that 100 square feet, but it was in there when we started discussing the rezoning.
Got it.
And then there was also the minimum rear yard setback of 40 feet if abutting in RS or RD district, so.
Because of the lot next to us to the south. Is that for the rear yard, or is that for the, any yard? If the lot is, does the rear, because the rear yard doesn't abut the residential district, right?
True.
Michelle, what section were you reviewing?
That's 4.4.3, general building.
Is there a sub-number in the table, though?
A5.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, that, the 40 feet, okay.
It doesn't specify just abutting the rear yard, so I guess we're interpreting that to be?
Any, any abutment, yeah, would sort of trigger that.
Correct.
What is the language specifically? Is it, what, do you have that?
The minimum rear yard setback is five feet or 40 feet if abutting in RS or RD district.
The rear yard.
And MXT.
Yeah, I guess there's a little bit of gray area in the interpretation of that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A quick question for the petitioner, are you guys building on the slab of the old or existing garage?
No.
Are you going to move it?
Yes, we would be building a new slab.
Okay. Is it on the same location, are you moving it?
No, we're trying to move it to the rear of the garage.
Okay. Michelle had a picture of it. Dominic, there was a, see where it's moving all over to the back corner?
The current garage is closer to the home.
Right.
So this would be at the back corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the garage, the south line of the garage, the proposed garage would clearly be within 40 of the south lot line, abutting the currently existing RS.
Okay.
Yeah, you're absolutely right on that. Eric, you raise a good point of the potential changes that we could recommend.
Right.
Obviously, question with the petitioner if she would go for that, to keep it within the MXT to potentially get fidelity to the plan.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's a very good point. One thing that I also would just point out, since we're kind of having the discussion, is while this was rezoned to MXT, prior to the MXT zoning, it was C2. It's actually been commercial zoning all the way back to 1943. So, it's actually, since we've had a zoning map, it's not been zoned residential. The house obviously predates that zoning ordinance by about 15 years, based on my experience, but probably 27 or 28.
So the question is, does it make more sense to allow for the variance, keep it zoned as-is?
Yeah, right, I mean, I think that's.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Of course.
Just a real quick consensus, the concept of a garage being on this property, does anybody have an issue with that?
Zero issues with that.
Okay. I kind of struggle with the rezoning myself, given the recentness of the comprehensive plan, which is barely three months old. I guess my question for staff, and obviously the applicant as well, is there a way that we could repackage this as variations in an expedited fashion and have it in the next hearing?
Yes, we would, we have not noticed for the August meeting, that would be coming shortly, so yes, we could.
Is that something staff is okay with, supportive of?
Yes.
Go ahead, if you have a moment, please.
Well, I do have a question.
Yeah, please come up to the mic again, so we're.
So I do have questions. So leaving it as a mixed-use zoning, what are the benefits to the village, and what are the benefits to me as a petitioner, and what are the disadvantages to you as a village leaving it, or converting it to residential, and what are the disadvantages to me?
So, I would say the advantage to you is that that property is, I'm not an appraiser, but that property is probably worth more zoned MX, because you can do more with it. If somebody were to acquire that property, or you already own the property, if you wanted to redevelop that property with the properties to the north that you also own, you wouldn't have to come back for a rezoning of the property, which if you have it changed, and then you or you want to sell it to somebody who says, we want to build a four-story mixed-use building on that corner, you or that person would have to come back and then hope that whoever's sitting up there then would give you back that MX zoning that you gave up.
Okay.
The RS zoning that you were given is single-family only.
Okay, so then I have another question. If it stays as a mixed-use, do I get any TIF benefits, or there's none?
I would not think so for the house itself, no. You know, if a future development there could potentially apply, like if you were to propose some new development on those, that property, or, but that would be up to, I don't know the language of the TIF off the top of my head, but.
I don't either, I'd have to look it up, but usually not for a single-family.
Because I think last year when I had questioned, because I added drain tiles, I was told that the drain tiles would qualify, I was just in a hurry because there was water coming in the building, and I didn't want to go through the process.
I'd have to look into the TIF.
Okay.
Exactly what was.
Yeah, I mean, either way, you're changing the zoning wouldn't remove you from the TIF, either way, or keeping, so that's, to that aspect of it. But from the standpoint of the village and the village's interests, I would say that long-term, whether that's 10 years, five years, 15 years, the village has a vision of a redeveloped St. Charles, or, I don't want to say redeveloped, but an improved aesthetic for St. Charles. And so, keeping that zoning there kind of signifies what the long-term vision is for that property, and it would make it easier for a future developer of that property, whether it's you or a landowner down the road, to do what the village envisions long-term with As far as the variation itself goes, I mean, I'd say the hardship is that, you know, this property is developed single-family, but it, the ordinance doesn't envision single-family in RX with, you know, a garage where it would need to be to fit the existing property. So I don't think, I don't think clearing the bar for variation is particularly high in this case.
No.
I feel like the, I actually kind of feel like the bar to clear for the rezoning is higher, is harder to justify than the variation, in my opinion.
Agreed.
And I don't want to make you wait a month, but, but that's my thought on it.
I agree. Madam petitioner, I'd say if you could wait, I think if I have it right, till August 14th and come back, as you heard, there's a general consensus that we're going to prove, that we generally approve the concept of the garage, and obviously, none of us can make a guarantee as to what you'll receive come August 14th, but I think you're looking good, if you're willing to wait another month. And work with staff on addressing the variation petition, we would withdraw the special use, or Michelle, if you could convert it with, I don't know, if you have to technically withdraw it, or you could convert.
We can discuss with the petitioner.
Sure. I would say we continue this item, and then if the applicant wishes to withdraw it between now and the next meeting, they can?
Let's continue it to the date certain of the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can come forward with a variation application, if that is successful, then the petitioner can choose to withdraw the rezoning.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. That gives them the flexibility, if anything were to change or anything else in the interim. Is that something you're comfortable with?
That's fine.
Okay, appreciate that very much, thank you for your patience on that. So, I would entertain a motion to continue item PZ 2509 to a date certain of, is that August 14th, 2025? Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's, the motion is continued next month, and I think we'll see you again. Yeah, thank you for your patience. All right, that's the end of our public, of our public hearings for the evening. I just wanted to mention what I think you're all aware about the proposal for, that was presented to the village board at the most recent village board meeting, to potentially restructure some of the commissions, including breaking up the Planning and Zoning Commission into a new Plan Commission and a new zoning commission, and on that agenda, there was a proposal for new appointments, and for what it's worth, none of the current members of this commission were to be appointed to either of those. I know a number of you came out and spoke at that meeting, I spoke on behalf of the commission, and then I just wanted to make you aware and that I sent an email to the village board, to President Patrick and Manager Rivas on behalf of the commission. I just would like to read that aloud so everybody can hear it, and if anybody has an issue with that, doesn't agree with the sentiment, you know, or wants to have discussion around that, that's, I would welcome that. I'd like to try to keep it to the, you know, the commission structures, not feelings that people may have had about how anything was, how the process went. So, take a minute here. So I wrote, "At the most recent village board meeting, I use the public comment period to ask that you reconsider the proposed ordinance dissolving the Planning and Zoning Commission. As the time allotted limited my ability to explain my concerns in detail, I would like to share my reasoning more fully with you all. As chairman of the commission since July of 2019, I believe the institutional knowledge and combined expertise that the nine-member commission holds will be instrumental in helping our village move forward during this time of transition. I have long advocated for a more active, short, and medium-term planning role for our commission. If the current administration has the political will to encourage staff in that direction, I have no doubt that the commission will rise to that challenge. Beyond my personal belief that our commission is well-positioned to carry the vision of the recently adopted comprehensive plan into the future, 30 years of experience as a professional planner has shown me that there are a number of practical, procedural, and structural issues with the proposed commission restructuring. The proposed separation of planning and zoning functions..." The proposed separation of planning and zoning functions of the commission will inject uncertainty, inconsistency, and inefficiency into the review process, increase the workload of staff, increase the cost and time burden on residents, developers, and property owners. Attached below is a more detailed list I've drafted outlining general best practices along with potential impacts on residents, staff, developers, and property owners. If you would like to discuss this matter further, I welcome the opportunity to speak with you in person or by phone. Thank you for your consideration." And then, the list I included was about a page and a half of bullet points, starting with general impacts and best practices. Enhanced coordination between planning and zoning functions leads to a more comprehensive review of proposals, ensuring that recommendations are made with a better understanding of long-term goals and avoiding conflicts between separate commissions. A combined commission allows members to develop a deeper understanding of both planning and zoning principles through training and experience, leading to more informed and consistent recommendations over time. A single point of contact and unified process for planning and zoning matters makes it easier for citizens to understand and participate in a process that is already complicated for many to understand. A combined commission can better monitor trends in development, planning, and zoning, enabling them to make timely recommendations for policy and legislative changes. These trends often ebb and flow, which can lead to difficulty filling the agendas of separate commissions in smaller communities or during less active periods. The requirements of planning and zoning bodies are complicated and constantly evolving, requiring regular training of both new and longstanding commission members. Separating commissions increases the time and resources required to ensure both bodies function properly. Commissions making recommendations on land use proposals generally must hold public hearings on the matter, including due process requirements of notice, evidence, witness testimony, and cross-examination. The separation of commissions and their responsibilities as defined under the proposed ordinance, particularly the informal review of development proposals by the Plan Commission, raises potential legal questions and, at a minimum, blurs the line between the proper role of both commissions. Impacts on staff, this is a pretty short one, but it's pretty major. Separation of planning and zoning functions leads to increased expenditure in both time and resources for staff, including requiring the community development team to attend multiple meetings and prepare multiple sets of minutes, agendas, and reports. Impacts on developers and property owners. Since 2018, Villa Park has worked to make the development approval process clearer and more efficient. The separation of planning and zoning functions will lead to increased costs and approval time for developers and property owners by requiring multiple meetings. It is not unusual for complex projects to require two or three meetings before a combined body. Separating the functions run the risk, runs the risk of doubling the number of meetings, potentially costing a developer, property owner, thousands of additional dollars in professional fees and carrying costs on the property. And that's one I don't think I have to explain to our engineers and architects and attorneys up here. Developers and property owners prefer to avoid uncertainty. Separate commissions and multiple recommendations with the possibility of conflicting recommendations or conflicting conditions of approval inject uncertainty into the process. The separation of planning and zoning functions as proposed leads to additional lack of clarity when relief is required for separate applications from both commissions. Should a developer or property owner first apply for necessary zoning relief from the zoning board or plat of subdivision from the Plan Commission? Which commission will hear which matter first, and how may the initial, initial recommendation impact the income of, the outcome of the other commission's recommendation? And then finally, a separate Plan Commission may attempt to weigh in on matters outside of its area of review, such as business models or specific design elements, which may be wholly inappropriate. A combined commission with experience limits the likelihood of such conversations. So I, I sent that email, I believe it was last Wednesday, and I've had some contact with some trustees, limited at this point, but I do intend to be at the committee the whole. While the agenda has not been published, I do expect this will be on the committee the whole for Monday, because that's, it was continued to that date, so at a bare minimum, they have to bring it up to discuss whether they're going to discuss it. And whether or not it will end up on the full agenda, I don't know at this point. So if anybody has anything they want to add, I think that's, that's what I have on the matter.
I think it's very well said.
Thank you.
Experience shows. Thank you, Chairman Jared, for doing that. I think that was fantastic. I saw the meeting online, and I thought you did a fantastic job there, and that email is perfect.
Thank you. And I, you know, I, I will continue to advocate for, for this commission structurally. I, I think it makes sense for our village. I don't see, I don't see the benefit of splitting the two functions. Are there potentially opportunities to get other residents involved in the form of a task force or a subcommittee, possibly? What that would be, I, you know, I, I wouldn't want to speculate, but, I mean, an example of a subcommittee that works well in our village, even though it's not under our commission, is the Bike, Pedestrian, and Transit Subcommittee. They do really good work advocating for the causes they advocate. They monitor the, you know, all the proposed bike infrastructure. So, you know, there, I think there are opportunities for, like that, to get people involved, potentially in the planning process, maybe not, maybe not recommending directly to the board, maybe to another commission, like the subcommittees. I, I think the proposal for the restructuring refers to them as task forces instead of subcommittees, but it, it's the same general premise. I, I think, you know, we've, over the last several years, we've accomplished a lot as a commission. Some of those commissioners have come and gone, but they've all done good work. From the, you know, the 2008 comprehensive plan, the, the more recent comprehensive plan, the comprehensive zoning map, zoning update, which was, I believe, started in 2016 and finished in 2018, that was a long process. We did the station area plan around the time that I came in, which turned into the station area zoning overlay district, which then eventually was rolled into the MX districts, the form-based zoning, that was kind of the basis for that. And, well, I know sometimes staff struggles with, I don't want to say struggles, I know past staff has sometimes, the MX zoning can sometimes be complicated, because it's form-based and a lot of people don't, not, not staff, but generally, it's kind of, can be a hard thing to explain. But if we look at the projects that have come out of those MX districts, whether it's 27 West Park, the Union, Sterling Funeral Home, they're the, they're the types of developments that we wanted in the districts where we zoned for them. And a couple of proposals that have been made that haven't come to fruition for one reason or another, the, the proposal for the, the drive-through at Heritage Day a few years ago that, that didn't come to fruition, Echo Terra, which is wherever that's at at the moment, you know, those, those were in the spirit of what we want, of what we wanted in those districts, too. So I'm proud of that, that legacy, and I don't have a number in front of me, but the, the number of recommendations that we've made that have gone to the Village Board that have not been adopted by the Village Board, I would guess is probably in the neighborhood of 1% to 2% in my time here. Does anybody else have anything they, they want to add or discussion on the topic at all?
No, I'd just like to echo the other comments that I think your, your letter and your presentation and that communication was, was spot-on. I think we've been put into a position where we feel compelled to sort of defend, defend our work at the particular commission, and I know other commissions are doing the same thing, so it's a, but I think we've done our, it's been a good, it was a good, good, good email. Hopefully it's, hopefully it's been viewed kindly.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other comment or discussion on that, then I would move to staff, and are there any public, actually, real quick, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Any discussion items from staff? Anything coming up that we should know about, other than?
The next agenda does have a few, three applications, I believe, coming forward that we're still reviewing their initial applications, so...
That's exciting. All right, any comments from commissioners on anything else before we close out? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned?